Montreal, is that where you are? Can you hear me, Sheena or Wes?
I can hear you, Natalie.
Can you hear me, Madam Mayor?
Sure can, yep.
Thank you.
All right, it's 2 o'clock. Let's get the show on the road. So, calling our meeting to order for Monday, April 4th, 2022. We have everyone in attendance with Counselor Bromanski, Jolly Broadhead, and Hughes on Zoom. And Lonely Mike, Ken, and I in chambers. So, that's great. I need a motion to adopt the agenda. I have no changes that I know of. Ken, go ahead.
Let the April 4th, 2022 agenda be adopted as presented.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Number three on our agenda is presentations, delegations, and announcements. And it's so exciting actually to see real faces in the chambers today for almost two years. Yeah, pretty much. We've had nobody in there under yellow tape that makes it look like a crime scene to the separated. It's so, so nice to have you all here. And I don't know, Counselor, have we done a proclamation in person yet? Did you? Okay, so this is our first proclamation in person. We'll get a picture. This is awesome. So, thank you all for coming. I got the email requesting the proclamation and my staff was here. Christina, he took it, I'm like absolutely 100% for sure. I was jumping up and down. So, this, I don't know why this has always just been such an important cause for me. You know, I've got the little heart on my driver's license and it's just, it just seems like a no-brainer. But it's not a no-brainer for everyone. So, we're doing Green Shirt Day proclamation today. There's lots of stuff on the website that you can read. But I think this is very important too in St. Albert because we lost four boys in the humble crash. And, you know, so I've got some notes here. So, 29 passengers, 16 lost their lives, and 13 will bear the physical and emotional scars for the rest of their lives. So, the next day on April 7th, defenseman Logan Bule succumbed to his injuries. And his parents offered to donate his organs so that six lives could live on. They did so because Logan told his parents he was registering as an organ donor and that he was inspired by his coach and mentor Rick Suggit, who passed away in the year earlier, who was also an organ donor and saved a bunch of lives himself. So, what happened after he, it was very public that he had donated his organs. And so, it was very miraculous in many ways how many people quickly signed up to be organ donors. The number I found was estimated almost 150,000 people registered to become organ donors in the days and weeks that followed. And they call this the Logan Bule effect. To date, this is the largest number of Canadians registering to become organ donors. To date, this is the largest number of Canadians registering to become organ donors in, organ donors in Canadian history due to one event and one person. So, Thursday, we will be, we'll be Green Shirt Day and it will honor not just Logan, but anyone honestly who's ever donated their organs and those that have taken the steps to have the conversation with your families. Because you all hear stories too that if your family disagrees with you after, after your passing, even if you had requested to be an organ donor, they can, they can halt process. Kind of feel like we should do it like they do in Europe where you have to opt out instead of opt in. Getting a thumbs up, but that's, that's another, another conversation for another day. So, we have with us, and I'm going to read the proclamation and then if any one of you wants to stand up at the mic and say a few words, you absolutely can. Talk about what's going on on Thursday, how we can support. I don't want to put you on the spot. If you don't want to, that's fine. If you will, okay. And then we'll, I'll get you guys to come down and take a picture. And then on Thursday, we will do some social media. So, let me read the proclamation. So, Green Shirt Day. Whereas on April 7th, 2018, in the aftermath of the tragic Humboldt Broncos bus crash, a young Alberta hockey player named Logan Bule became an organ donor. And whereas Logan had registered as a donor and shared his wishes with his family, allowing his gift to save the lives of six others and his story to continue on, inspiring thousands of people around the world to register as organ and tissue donors. And whereas City Council of St. Albert is committed to improving organ and tissue donation program and increasing the number of registered donors so that more lives can be saved and improved and more families have the gift of time with their loved ones. And whereas Logan Bule's family, sorry, I don't know where that came from. And the Canadian Transplant Association carry Logan's legacy by recognizing April 7th as Green Shirt Day, raising awareness of the need for registered organ and tissue donors and the necessity of donors to share their wishes with families so that access to life-saving and life-transplanting transplants can be improved. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Heron, Mayor of the City of St. Albert, do hereby proclaim April 7th, 2022 as Green Shirt Day in St. Albert. I encourage all residents to take the time to understand the incredible gifts they can give to others to save lives. Consider registering to be an organ and tissue donor and discuss your wishes with your loved ones and wear a green shirt. So, thank you ladies for joining us. Do you want to maybe introduce yourselves and say where you're from? Sorry, I do this all the time. I never know when it's going to happen.
It is with great pleasure. I accept this proclamation on behalf of the Canadian Transplant Association Alberta Region and myself, a liver transplant recipient. Without the public awareness and the support of councillors like yourself declaring this, we would not be able to do the work we can, which is the goal we set this year with Green Shirt Day is nationwide, another 100,000 sign up.
Wow.
So, I urge you all to have that conversation with your families. Let them know your wishes. Because yes, they do have the final say, but there are 4,400 Canadians waiting for a transplant today. You can make a difference. It's your choice. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Ladies, do you want to add?
I get to follow that. Tiffany Harson, I'm here in St. Albert and my little brother died at 2.5 years old, 2.5 years old. And we donated all of his organs.
Hi, I'm Jackie Hardy. I'm currently in Le Duke, but I actually live in Yellonite for 34 years. And that is where my son Josh passed away 10 years ago at 18 years old. He wasn't wearing his helmet and unfortunately succumbed to his injury. So, six people benefited from his organs.
Thank you guys for coming. And sorry, both the tears, but it is a pretty emotional topic. Why don't we have a picture now? Okay, next on our agenda, we have another presentation, like two in one day. This is amazing. So, we have Pauline Atwood with us. She's a resident wishing to speak to council transportation issues and planting sunflowers in St. Albert. So, hi, Pauline. Come to the mic. Hopefully, our staff explain the process. You have five minutes. There's, yeah, there is a timer there, but we'll give you. Are we doing an audible ding when we get close to five? Okay. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and councillors. I have two items, as you mentioned. And I am just wondering if I have five minutes for both or five minutes each?
Sorry, five minutes for everything.
Okay, okay. Okay, so the first item I want to talk about is transportation. And I recently moved to Edmonton and was thinking about purchasing a vehicle. But when I realized that transportation was so accessible in St. Albert, I decided not to. After about a year, I decide, or no, six months, I decided not to. And I'm very happy with the bus services, except that the bus, the regular buses do not go to the service centre. And that's, that's a disadvantage for me. However, the on-demand buses is what I think is a real difficulty because they don't work very well. I find that there is no communication when I order a bus or when I request a bus. I have no idea whether they're coming, whether I missed them, you know, I don't know. There's nobody to call, no way to find out. So, there's not that communication. The second problem is that when I'm being dropped off or picked up, there's always a number of different stops that need to happen before I'm actually dropped off or, or when I'm picked up. And that is because there's a lot of youth teenagers that are using a bus system. And yeah, and so they just take a lot more time, many more stops. Sometimes they're there, sometimes they're not there. Sorry, is that three minutes? Oh, okay. Oh, my goodness. Okay, so anyway, there's problems with, there's problems with the on-demand. I think seniors should have maybe a discount or not have to pay. Whereas now I realize that the youth don't have to pay. I feel like the system mostly belongs to them because they seem to be the main drivers of the on-demand. So. Okay, so that's my first is like something needs to be done. Everybody is frustrated. The drivers are frustrated and me as a passenger, I'm frustrated. The teens are very happy. Okay, the second item on my list is planting sunflowers. And that could be a little bit of a happier vein, but it's got underlying sad tones too. So, how does this relate to St. Albert? The national flower of Ukraine is the sunflower. And I think we have people coming to St. Albert, refugees coming. And I thought, wouldn't it be nice if they could see sunflowers or national flower here in St. Albert? This is a day of crying welcoming them. And I think because we're the botanical city that we, that that might be something that we, that St. Albert would, would consider. I was thinking of packing small packages and leaving them in baskets in different places. But I think at the municipal level, there would be a, a greater amplifier to having that happen. And so, I think, as I'm asking if maybe posters could be put up, if they could put on different social media, like Facebook and Instagram and Twitter, maybe just to encourage people to plant sunflowers in their yard to show that solidarity with the Ukrainian people that, that are here and will come. Okay, so I see I'm one minute early. Okay.
The five, the five minutes is actually a fair amount of time. People think it's not, but it's, it's a fair amount. So.
Okay, good.
I'll just, so, so what happens next is council has opportunity to ask you questions if you're willing to answer. And then the next thing on our agenda is called business arising from presentation. So, that gives council the opportunity to ask our staff questions. So, I'm sure there might be some questions about the on-demand and I wrote down some of the issues. The communication, too many stops and then, and then maybe having the seniors not paid. Those are the three that I've got. And then I can tell you already, the, the sunflower conversation came up from another resident. Sent me an email and I'll, I'll, is anyone ready to answer the sunflower question down here? I can't even remember what the response was. I think it was a yes, that we'll do it. Yeah.
Yes, we are looking at the various options right now, but we also have Louise Stewart online.
Okay, well, when we get to that, I'll go to Louise. Okay, so council, any questions for Pauline? Oh, didn't my summary do a good job of it? Pardon? Go ahead.
Paulina, just me down here. I just want to say.
He's down here and he's on the screen.
Actually, I just want to say thanks for coming in and bringing your concerns. It's, it is nice to see people in person and, and I'm glad that you've helped and that you can have, come down and, and give your concerns. I know you have to get around. It's, 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 yeah, here we are. So, I just want to say thank you and we'll for sure take note of these and we'll pass them on to administration.
For sure.
Appreciate it. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
This is the point of our, this part of the meeting is for this opportunity. So, I'm glad you took advantage of it. So.
Okay.
All right. Do you know other questions? I'm going to move on to actually business arising. Does anyone have any questions for either the Green Shirt Day agenda item or on-demand transit or sunflowers? Well, if Louise is here, I'd love to hear what, what the plans are for planting this summer, if she has any.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we do. Based on the, the council inquiry that happened a few weeks ago, we have talked to Salisbury and Enjoy, which is the old holes that provides our seasonal planters. They, they sort of ruled out the ones that are currently at SAP that are seasonally decorated. But we do have some bigger ones that they're going to look to incorporate sunflowers in. And then our in-house horticulture crew is, is looking at putting in sunflowers in some of our annual planters. It's a root system that you kind of want to keep contained. So, we just got to be very careful. And then we do have some in-ground beds where we've had residents go and actually plant them long before the Ukraine war. They did them last year and we're anticipating they'll likely do them again this year around the Woodlands Play Park. So, we are looking at different options for that.
Do we, do we supply the seeds for the partners in the parks?
That's a good question. We haven't, in the past typically, well, we do provide plant material. So, providing sunflowers, yes, we could certainly do it. The problem when you grow them from seed is you typically don't flower until August. So, you, you don't actually even appreciate it until later on in the year. Whereas we can hopefully get some that are maybe slightly ahead of schedule that we can get into, into our planters.
Okay, cool. Councillor Broadhead has a question. I bet you it's not about flowers. I bet you it's about transit.
Well, Madam Mayor, you're right. Looking forward to seeing sunflowers around the city of St. Albert, to be sure. But my question is, I, I was just wondering if I saw Jay on the screen. I was wondering if he could just review for us the process of engaging in on-demand service so that council's aware of the process that is gone through.
Through the chair, to Councillor Broad, I've actually got Will, Will Steppacon line here as well and he can give you a full rundown of, of all through the steps of how we manage our on-demand.
Perfect, thanks.
Right now, I'm not exactly sure what I'm allowed to say, but we are going to be addressing in the near future, a lot of the complications that the resident has been experiencing. That's been in the works for, for a while now and we're getting, we're getting very close to a, a resolution. And I, I don't know, like without revealing some, some proprietary information, I, I just like to say that we are addressing the on-demand issues now.
So, do you have a, is it something to do with the, the provider of the, the whatever, the app or whatever is used for on-demand?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. But you've heard some of these issues before?
Yeah, the, the issue of, of youth making a lot of bookings and not using them or making a booking and, you know, several of them will board at the same time is an issue that has been brought to our attention and is one that concerns us. But we're not exactly sure how, how to address it with the, with, in the coming, in the coming weeks, we will be able to put out messaging to individuals who cancel or who don't show up once they've made a booking. That one's fairly, fairly easy. But we don't want to discourage youth from taking the, the, the public transit option as well. So, it's a difficult one for us because the, the youth are making, making a lot of bookings, but they also cancel a lot of bookings. And when they make a lot of booking, they, they, they utilize it or many of them will utilize a single booking because they're going for one location back to their homes. So, it has become a bit of an issue. And we realize this and we are, we are in the midst of trying to prepare some messaging that will hopefully have some impact on that. But we, we really aren't in a position to deny transit usage at this point, or at least we don't believe we are. So, we'll, we'll, we'll exercise the, the issue of messaging first.
Okay, yeah, I think education quite often is the, the key. The youth probably don't understand the unintended consequences, Ken. So, I think that's a good place to start.
Madam Mayor, is there a timeline around when the, the revised communication or the revised app would be available then to the public?
We're looking towards the, the end of April, that it will be available to the public. If it's not end of April, we're looking to, you know, the first week of May or so. And then we will transition current users to the, to possibly a new platform. And, and then we will expand the use to the, to the Saturday timeframe.
Okay.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Broadhead. Okay, I see no more questions. So, Pauline, thank you for registering and actually letting us know the topics because that allowed us to have the experts on the Zoom call and waiting to respond. So, that's, that's the process. That's why we ask people to register ahead of time. So, really appreciate that. Okay, we are now moving on to consent agenda, which is really just the minutes. So, why don't we just skip over that and somebody make a motion to adopt the minutes? Anyone willing to do that? Go ahead, Councillor Mackay, whoever you are.
You go on holidays. That the special council meeting minutes of March 15th and 16th, 2022 and the regular council minutes of March 21st, 2022 be adopted as presented.
Thank you for that. Seeing no one wanting to speak to that, I will call for the vote. Voting's closed. That motion passes unanimously. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, Counsel Broadhead, your hand's still up. Is it something different?
No.
Okay. All right, now we're on to our first business item, which is 7.1, which is school site allocation. The agreement update. We have Adrian making a presentation.
Actually, it will be myself and Danielle presenting on this.
Okay.
Obviously.
Go ahead.
All right, good afternoon, council. My name is Tracy from the Planning Department. And joining me for this presentation is Danielle from Recreation and Parks. We're here today to provide an update on the work related to the new Joint Use and Planning Agreement. In other words, the JUPA, for schools within St. Albert. The JUPA will be made up of the School Site Allocation Agreement, SSAA, and the Reciprocal Use Agreement, RUA. And we'll be presenting the agreement separately, starting off with the RUA, followed by the SSAA. So with that, I'll hand it over to Danielle to talk about the RUA.
Thanks, Tracy. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I'm here to present an overview and some information on the reciprocal use agreement as it relates to the Joint Use and Planning Agreement. So to provide a bit of history and context for council members, the current reciprocal use agreement, which is still in place, was last renewed in December of 2015 for a term of five years, which would take us normally to the end of 2020. In January of 2020, we initiated discussions for the renewal agreement with city, between city administration and members of the three school divisions through the associate superintendents. In March of 2020, work was halted on the discussions related to the reciprocal use agreement due to COVID priorities for all partners. And in 2021, those conversations re-initiated on the agreement renewal just to start, to start the process back up. At that point, we had initial discussions and completed a review and a redline copy of the existing reciprocal use agreement. In the spring of 2021, further work was held until processes were affirmed in alignment with the memorandum of understanding for the Joint Use and Planning Agreement. So it is important to note that even though we didn't hit the timeline for renewal of December of 2020, December 2020, we still have an active agreement in place while we continue our discussions with the school divisions. I want to provide a bit of a framework for some of the successes and challenges that we have noted through our collaborative conversations over the past two years with regard to this reciprocal use agreement. One of the strongest levels of support from the group that we have initiated discussion with surrounds a philosophical alignment from all parties regarding the principles outlined in the reciprocal use agreement in place. This includes principles like access, autonomy, conflict resolution, consultation, efficiency, equitable costs, and transparency and the like. We've also seen as another strength of the agreement, strong utilization of civic spaces by school division programs. And concurrently, we've seen strong use of school spaces by local community organizations. This has definitely been impacted by COVID as we've seen restrictions change and evolve the operations of all of our organizations. And in alignment to respond to those changes, there's been a decrease of use of reciprocal use time on both ends of the last couple of years. We are looking forward to returning to a more normal state of implementation of the agreement in the future, but certainly want to acknowledge the collaboration between all of our partners at this time. And finally, we as member organizations have worked really diligently to improve communication and work collaboratively to mitigate challenges and work towards common goals together in alignment with the reciprocal use agreement. We did also identify some challenges with the current agreement, which include more, more items of an operational nature, including facility cancellations, some facility use challenges, and looking for consistencies and processes between varying school divisions. So as I mentioned in the previous slide, we have had confirmation of a philosophical alignment as a collective group. And as a result, has been discussed, the plan is to continue with the same framework and approach moving forward. We would look for updates to the reciprocal use agreement that align to more detailed technical updates to the agreement, which would include things like grammatical items, position titles, proper naming of partner organizations, update to list of schools and facilities, assurance that all schools and city facilities were included in the document, removing in operational inconsistencies and ensuring that we have a consistent framework for hours and access, confirming operational elements to ensure we have a common understanding and expectation around certain items, things like operational days, cancellation periods and the like. And the biggest change for us moving forward will result in structurally aligning the reciprocal use agreement to the Joint Use and Planning Agreement, as it will not sit on it as an independent document any longer. We're exploring exactly how with our legal, with our legal team, the reciprocal use agreement will be embedded into the Joint Use Planning Agreement and its process for modifications and approvals in alignment with this new structure. So that's kind of where we're at right now with the current reciprocal use agreement. And with that, I'll turn the presentation back to Tracy for her overview of the other portion of the agreement. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at the end of the presentation with regards to reciprocal use.
Thank you, Danielle. I'll now talk about the Joint Use and Planning Agreement. So since the last council meeting, administration has been working on the creation of a new JUPA. And again, for this new agreement, we are utilizing several documents to create it. And these documents include the past school site allocation agreement that will form the base, the reciprocal use agreement that Danielle just went over, the MGA requirements, which I will expand more onto the next slide, and the municipal development plan, specifically Section 11.4 about schools, as well as feedback from the parties of school agreements. So in 2019, the Municipal Government Act was amended to require municipalities to have a JUPA with schools. And on this slide, we have a list of items that the MGA requires a process for. And they include a process for the planning, development, and use of school sites, the transfer of municipal school reserves, disposal of school sites, servicing of school sites, the use of schools and municipal facilities, including maintenance fees, et cetera, working collaboratively with schools, dispute resolution, and a timeframe for regular review. St. Albert's current SSAA already addresses most of these MGA requirements, except for the ones that are starred on this slide. And the ones that are starred on this slide and still need to be addressed in the new JUPA is a process for the disposal of school sites and a process or timeframe for regular review. In addition to the MGA requirements, there has been feedback and discussions between the parties of the school site allocation agreement in the past that have raised additional considerations for the new JUPA. And they include considerations for something around strategic allocation of school sites, pre-allocation of school sites, how you can strengthen the current dispute resolution process, having a protocol related to undeveloped school sites, particularly in the matured neighborhoods, and the decision-making authority for the allocation of school sites. To conclude, administration is seeking council input regarding the agreement no later than April 8th, just this Friday. I know in the agenda report, it stated April 19th, but just so we have enough time to review the JUPA with the school boards and with our legal department before we bring it back to council in June, I think we need to have, we have a tighter timeline. And that concludes our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. So my first question to you is, is there anything specific that you need clear direction on from council, either tonight or by Friday? Disposal of school sites is one that I've come up with, or is this just a free-for-all?
We're looking for a free-for-all. In terms of the additional consideration, there are some that we, I think we would like council input on, specifically how to handle unallocated school sites. That's something that we want to consider or input on. Disposal of school sites. We have something in the MGA currently that we might draw upon for process or establish a process for and we can add to the agreement. But if there's anything else outside of the slides, we're open to see how we can input that into the document.
As well, Mayor, here and I would say from reciprocal use, we're, we're really wanting to pursue it as the same philosophy that we've always operated reciprocal use on. So unless there's a opposing direction of council at this point, that's what we'll continue to negotiate that agreement, that portion of the agreement on. So I just want to, I guess, get a red flag from anyone on council that would propose an opposing direction to the existing document we have in place.
Yeah, I don't see a lot of changes to the joint use as, as opposed to the allocation and use of. All right, I already see Counselor Broadhead has hands up and Counselor Killick. So I don't know which one came first, so I'll go with you, Wes, and then you, Mike.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as I read through the agreement, the, the question that still comes to my mind is, how long is a school board able to indicate that they have some interest? Like, I mean, I'm reading section L and then, so in, in the whole, the whole agreement is written around managing the school sites in a way that's equitable for everybody. But in the end, if the school site is not required by a school board, then it goes back to the city for other purposes that can be, that, that the city can use it for. So my question to you is, is that is there any limitation? Or should we write a limitation into the agreement that says within five years or something? If you, if you deem that you need that school site, but within five years, there is no hope of getting to school? I mean, how long are you going to sterilize that land and say, you know what? We have dreams of this. It might be 100 years from now, but we want to maintain this school site where in, in the meantime, the city may have very good use for that land and we're unable to on the hopes that a school board might get a, a school. Any, any comment on that?
We should have, we should have had an under-over when, when Wes was going to ask that question. I knew you'd go there, Wes. So I see Kerry has his hand up already, but I saw David turn his camera on too. So Kerry, do you want to kick off?
So I'll, I'll start and I was going to turn it over to David as well. But currently, the way that the MGA is laid out is that there's no mechanism to take it back unless we have it specified in the agreement. So that's exactly the type of feedback that require Counselor Broadhead. Is that, is there, is it a five-year, 10-year, 20-year time period? Or, or is there another mechanism that if it looks like another area is going to be developed before that, before an existing site, does that come back to our inventory? Those are the things that we need to draw it in this agreement because once a school site is allocated, it's, we can't take, we can't just arbitrarily take it back without that being specified. But I'll let David, will probably be a little more clear and eloquent than I am.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, Mr. Hiltz has, has basically nailed it. I would, I would put a little bit of a gloss on it. Under the MGA, if a school board passes a resolution declaring a site in which they already have an interest, that's the key. If they've already got an interest in the site, then they must pass a resolution declaring it surplus to their needs and then it gets transferred back to the city. If they choose not to, under the MGA, pass that resolution, then there's nothing to compel that, that site to come back to the city. But we have a real opportunity here because there's this, this section of the MGA under which we're negotiating this agreement is a new section. And it specifically says the parties are to come up with a mechanism to deal with exactly this situation. So basically, there's a great big club over the head of both the cities and all throughout the province and the school board is to say, look, enough of this, enough of hoarding sites forever. You guys come up with a formula or a mechanism or a means to be sure that if sites are surplus to a, to a school board's needs, they can't just hang on to them like a dog in a manger, right? So this, this is a historic opportunity to do it. How it will work out in the negotiations, I have no idea. But, but we have an opportunity finally to do that so that situations like we're aware of in St. Albert don't drag on literally to the end of time.
I, I appreciate that. If, if that is on your horizon to, to deal with, then I will, unless you need me to write a, a position that I would like to see that taken, I'll, I'll just leave it at that. But if you do need me to write you something, I'd be more than willing to ask that that be included in your negotiating strategy.
And I would, I would echo that as well, Counsel Broadhead. And I'm seeing nods from Counsel Killick. So just on that point, Mr. LaFleur, you said it was key that the school board had an interest in that site. We have school boards. Do we need three resolutions from three, or from all the different school boards? Or is that, are you referring to our past practice of, of saying this site is for the Catholic Board and this site is for the public board? And so they were kind of grandfathered, is what we called it.
So that, that, that's a good question. And I have to tell you, there's no easy answer to it because we have changed our practice over time. There were times when we would, we would specifically allocate a site to one of the boards and then that board would voluntarily give it up and it would go to another board. So we'd have to go back for each, each site that currently has been designated, if you will, as a future school site. We'd have to look back at the history and say, look, which board, if any, has an interest in it now? What we can do in a new agreement is negotiate a provision whereby we carefully determine how boards get an interest and we could even put a clause in the agreement saying that the interest lasts only so long unless all parties agree to extend it, something like that, right? So we can deal with this situation going forward. But how we deal with the legacy sites would require a careful understanding of how each of them has been dealt with in the past. And I confess, I don't have that detailed knowledge here today, but I'm pretty sure the negotiating team either already has or could easily get it. So, so there, there's a lot of work to be done on the table here. There really is.
There is, but I, I think you're right. It is a good opportunity. Also on that, I, I would assume, and this is probably Adrian or Tracy to answer, the new agreement will not bring back those kind of pre-allocations to a, to a specific board. Is that correct? We took that out.
That's, that's correct, Mayor. We removed pre-allocation go. And I think that all parties had agreed at the time that that was something that we wanted to get away from. I think there was a sense of fairness at play about how, how and when need was demonstrated by boards. That was a concern there.
Okay, and my input on, on the, to revert it back to the city as MR would be maybe, Wes said five years, that seems a little short. But maybe it's five years after the neighborhood is fully built out. Maybe we, we kind of link it to the build-out of the neighborhood. And then, because you know, we might need a school, but it's the province that pays for it. So they're, they're just, their hands are tied as well. But we've had four funding announcements for schools and that, that site in Oakmont has been passed over every time. So maybe, maybe you link it to that too. How many times has it been passed over? They don't want it. Keep saying they don't want it, but they won't give it up. Mr. Hiltz?
Thank you, worship. Well, further to what you were just commenting on and linking it to the built-out of the neighborhood, there's the other side of the equation as well, which we would have in Kingswood neighborhood, where you have a school site allocated for 30 years, but the neighborhood isn't built out.
That's true.
And do you hold it for that? Like, those are the questions that we're trying to, to work through.
Yeah, that one's a unique one, I would say. But so five years after it's fully pulled out or we've tried to appropriate the land and anyway. Okay, I'm going to you, Counsel Killick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to clarify the timing on the feedback. The briefing said April 19th and the presentation said April 8th. Did, what do, what do we work?
It's the, it's the 8th, Counsel Killick. That was a, an error on my part on the, on the, on the date. It's eight, it's this Friday.
Okay, so we need it by the 8th. Thank you. The MGA, I think, says we have to have this done in three years from when the ruling was passed. Are, are we close to that? I'm not sure what, what's the timeline that we're working?
I think it's the end of this year, right?
Yes, it's June of 2023.
Okay.
But because we had, we had, there was an allocation timing perspective. We thought it was at the end of this year. It's actually in June, but we, we had put a June timeline. And we, it could lead into the fall, but we are trying to make that June timeline of this year.
Okay, yeah, so we're not under like the, the guns here to get this done. Great. The, the other one is, do we, do we have any urgent timelines to do school site allocation by ASP? Like, do we have new ASPs coming forward that, that we're going to be needing to be addressed right away?
Just Shiro, I guess is the only one, right?
Oh, Adrian too.
Yeah, Adrian, yeah.
So council has approved ASPs for future school sites. So council has approved ASPs for future school sites, Sherro being one of them that we would anticipate. And then that would, that would come into place at time of subdivision. Riverside has a, a second school site to the north and west, which I, I don't know based on their development plans that you'll see that this year. But Sherro, you, there's a good chance you will see that one come into the inventory this year, early next year. And then the northeast area structure plan that Land Rex is working on is also contemplating a, a school site or school sites, but that still has to go to council to approve the area structure plan itself. So you've got a few out there that will contribute to the overall school site inventory, probably within the next year or two. I don't know if that helps in our.
That's good.
I was just concerned that there was something, again, urgency that we may be needing to keep in mind as we work through this.
If we got funding today, we have the one in Kingswood, the one in Oakmont, and then the first one in Riverside that are already ready.
Ready.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Uh, no, you have, you have only the Riverside and, yeah, Riverside and Oakmont, only two, only two school sites are available. You did not get Kingswood, so.
Okay, so we.
Sorry, did I?
And then maybe just for clarification for, for me, strategic allocation versus pre-allocation. I've searched Google and I couldn't figure out what the difference of those two were. You could maybe explain that to me.
Tracy, do you want to touch on that one or do you want me to take it?
Uh, do you mind taking that one?
Sure, yeah. So basically, the, the discussion that's happened over time has been whether there is a strategic allocation consideration that would provide some level, I guess, depending on who you're talking to, of fairness in where, with, which, which schools are allocated. So whether it's a public or a Catholic or Francophone, that there would always be a consideration that each of those parties to the agreement would have, would, would have an ability to get a school site. So there's a kind of, there's a, there's a phenomenon going on with different, I guess, different enrollment rates between the different boards. And then there's a, a sense between the boards or at least some of the parties to the agreement that if they were allocated school sites in more growth areas in the new neighborhoods, that perhaps their enrollment would increase. And so the, there is, there's been discussion over time about whether that is like a strategic allocation is a part of the consideration of who gets a particular school site? Or is it just basically whenever a school, whenever a school district identifies a need for a new school based on enrollment trends, et cetera, that they are the first person or the first party in line to get that site?
So that, so that's strategic. And then what's pre-allocation? I'm trying to distinguish the difference.
Pre-allocation is what had happened in the past, which caused some difficulties from time to time where it was something along the lines of, okay, party A and B, we have two school sites available and which ones are you interested? And then we'll just allocate those to you before you actually express a need or demand. And that was something that did happen with Oakmont and then there was, it took quite a while to go away from that pre-allocation, but it's still, that site is still within the school site inventory. So yeah, pre-allocation is allowing a school site to basically, or a school district to basically claim dibs before they've formally gone through the expression process that was previously identified in the school site allocation agreement.
Okay, and then with, with the returning of unused school sites, I totally agree with Mayor Heron's comments and Counsel Broadhead's comments in terms of, you know, how, how do we put a bookend on bringing those back to the city? My understanding is the MGA speaks to demonstrated requirement for a school site. They can't just say we, we would like one. There, there has to be kind of like a mean, a whole means test. So could we use that to say you haven't actually, you've said you want it or, or in fact, you don't want to give it up? But without having that strong kind of facts and data to support it, is that, would that be a way to kind of demonstrate that there is no need and that that out, that site should be given back to the city? It seems, it seems to me there is a, a fax and data tool that we could use rather than just saying, hey, we want a school board saying, hey, we want to hold on to a site indefinitely. Is, is that available to us?
Oh, yeah, I, I, I think that something like that would be in, will be researched as we, as we go along with kind of fleshing out the agreement, Counsel Kilic. I would think that something along those lines with also the timing component, yeah, would be something that we'll, we'll have to look at. I, I know that it's been expressed multiple times in the past number of years by council that these sites are just kind of stuck in limbo and it doesn't seem like they will eventually be used for school sites. So, yeah, I, I think that's something that we'll have to wrestle with as we go through this process.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, this is kind of outside of what we would see in JUPA, is that what we're calling it? Joint Use and Planning Agreement? Adrian, are we? I, my question is around deferring MR, which gave us kind of the issue of that we have faced in Kingswood. Is, is it our planning department's position that we won't defer MR like it has in the past?
Uh, yes, Mayor Heron. Generally, we do everything that we can to avoid a situation where we've got MR owing or outstanding. And we do have the requirement that we put into the, the MVP that basically all developers have to provide a school site within that first 30% of development of their neighborhoods, which then gives us a lot more leverage to make sure that the community's needs are being accommodated for. And, and that's, that's something that I think will kind of keep, keep us from having the Kingswood issue happen again.
Uh, okay, back to the actual agreement. I was, what about the size of the site? So are we writing anything in? So when we're, when we're allocating our strategic allocation of school sites, we're having it like, because I know a high school needs a lot more space than a elementary. So are we trying to address in this agreement the size of sites? So we don't put a small school on a big site, kind of? Is it anywhere?
All right. So thank you for the question, Mayor Heron. So there's a, there's a couple of things that have happened. I'm trying to think of what year it was, 2015 or maybe 2016. The city approved a technical study for the allocation of school sites. And in that document, we had identified some recommended guidelines for school site sizes. And we've been using those as, uh, through our subdivision process and even through our area structure plan terms of reference. Those site size guidelines are in there along with the recreation, recreation lands component. So that you have a school site attached to recreation lands as well. And that is intended to stay in the, the new area structure plan terms of reference. So that's how we make sure that we're getting site sizes of adequate space. And then what actually happens when, when a school is built? Right now, the process is that we don't, we don't provide any more land to the, to the school districts than, or the divisions than, then is absolutely necessary. So we, we wait until the, the building is going vertical and then we subdivide, subdivide the land based on a survey of the footprint, the parking lot, which includes bus layby area and room for one playground and two portable schools, classrooms. So that's, that is, that keeps the, the land to a minimum. I think there's something that we haven't clarified whether we should go down this route or not. But right now, we, we give that land in fee simple or the, the title to land in some other neighboring municipalities, they own your lease so that the land theoretically would eventually go back to the city if the school were ever to go away. Something that we haven't resolved.
Build up, not out, right?
And, and that, that was also a former MVP policy to strongly encourage, I don't know if it was a shall or a should, that all community buildings of things like a school site should be vertical. We do know that St. Albert Public in the past has said that based on just the limited amount of land available, that their, their goal in the future is to make sure that all their schools are generally two-story.
Awesome. Okay, one more question, then I'll go back to council. One of the things that I highlighted was decision-making authority for the allocation of school sites. So I believe that if we get provincial funding, then the city manager and the three superintendents sit down and give out the site, where, where is it going? Is that still the plan for going forward or do you want to try to bring that in-house so that it goes straight to planning and you, Adrian? And maybe there's examples of how other municipalities do it. I'm not sure.
Yeah, it, it's definitely, I think it's a question that can be on the table as we review this, this agreement. I know that there have been kind of proposals over time about who should be the school allocating authority, whether it be administration council or the committee, and there's trade-offs to each of those. I guess we could provide council with some additional, maybe a little background on just the pluses and minuses of that if, if council would so choose. But I think what we're trying to say is there's a lot, basically, we don't want to preclude any sort of conversation from happening. If council has a interest in exploring an idea, then let us know and we'll explore that for you guys.
Well, I, I was, I hope you didn't think I was at all indicating that council would have a role in that. Absolutely not. Right? Our job is to approve the area structure plan and then, and then that's it. Like, I don't want to get, that gets very political. But I would assume that you would, the funding goes through a particular board and then that board superintendent would sit down with you or city manager or you, Adrian, and say, which site do you want? And that, that would be the end of it. That's where I see it, but. Okay, Counsel Kilic, I removed you and I think I made a mistake because you were head of Counsel Mackay.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I thought that was from you before and then as soon as I took you off, you re-clicked. Sorry about that.
It, it actually builds on your comment about kind of best practices. And I, I assume all school board or all municipalities are going through the development of new school site allocations processes and there must be best practices out there, so.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Counsel Kilic, through your worship, is that this is going to be fairly new. Like, we were one of the very few municipality school boards that actually had a JUPA before. It became a new requirement in the MGA. So this is pretty, pretty new for a lot of places, but we do rely on other communities and stuff and we do have conversations about best practices. However, there's not going to be a lot of weight to be able to take from other examples yet. I don't know, Adrian, or?
But I guess, I guess if there was no.
There wasn't a requirement before.
If there was no kind of allocation agreement in a municipality, like let's say Edmonton, for example, then would the, when the allocation of that school site goes straight to planning? Like, we were unique because we involved the school boards. So does it work well when you, in, in, when you don't have a planning agreement and the subdivision appeal authority just doesn't? I don't know.
So I'll, I'll let Adrian start on that one and then I'll.
Yep. So thank you, Kerry. So Mayor Heron, I, I think a lot of communities, it's typically the school sites who are typically, I guess, allocated by the subdivision authority. And that's based on some research that we did a, a number of years ago on, on just how the whole mechanism worked throughout the province. But I guess one of, one of the things that comes up is, I guess, just that politicization and, and who wants to be the party that's the appropriate party? And that's kind of what we were talking about previously. But yeah, so it is typically the school site or the, the subdivision authority typically just allocates school site. But a lot of those communities also have almost surplus of school sites. I think the city of St. Albert is in the minority as far as the number of ready, readily available school sites. And that's always been something that's been a bit of a, an, an additional level of complexity is that we haven't had always school sites available for the school, this, the school districts in order to be allocated.
Any more? Okay, Counsel Mackay and then Counsel Broadhead.
Yeah, I'll be quick because actually I just fell in around your last point was from the decision-making, but then the answer confused me a little. So I, I just want to, I mean, my understanding, so the school boards put forward Alberta education, their capital needs. Then it's up to Alberta education to determine whether or not they fund those particular school boards. So if one of our school boards is chosen over the other for funding, why wouldn't they get the first available school site? So why would we even have like, what's, what's to be discussed?
All right. The, the, the discussion happens if there are two boards that get awarded schools at the same time. And they both have an interest, they both may have an interest in a particular site.
So only, and so the, the caveat there would be only if two of our school boards were fortunate enough to, to get funding allocated to them by Alberta education, then we would have an issue over if we only had one site.
That, that, that would be generally correct, yes.
Kerry, go ahead. Sorry, I apologize.
Go ahead.
Yeah, through, through your worship to Counsel Mackay. The other issue that comes into play is their funding is tied to having a school site. So they want to have school sites identified so they can be moved up the capital prioritization list. So that's where this, that debate becomes a key to them.
Okay, that, that clarifies and I, I appreciate that. I mean, but if you only have two sites, I mean, that creates a, a challenge. The, and I understand the difference in the strategic would have because you could, depending on where a school site was, might actually increase a school board's enrollment. So I understand. Uh, but I guess I'm going to go somewhere a little bit different and around the reciprocal use of that school. Are we limited by anything in the current agreement as to something that we, we should be looking at? Like hours of operation or the types of activities such as use for clubhouses? Or let's say we have a particular community that wants access to one of our facilities, but we just don't have the space or the time. Can we work with the school boards to give, free up that site? Or is that something that's blocked under the current reciprocal use or is that something we can love?
Through the mayor, Counsel Mackay, I'm not sure I understand the question, Counsel Mackay. Can you?
All right, no problem. I'm used, I'm used to that. No, the, the point being is, is under the, under our existing reciprocal use, is there, is there anything that blocks a particular use that we have, might identify that we just don't have space for? For example, timing or a particular organization or something at all that right now we can't, we can't meet the demand, but we're, we're, we can't use our reciprocal use agreement either because it's not identified in there or the school boards won't allow it.
Uh, thanks for that, Counsel Mackay and through the mayor to Counsel Mackay. Um, there's not very many limitations. There are some restrictions on what we can do it or what we can book within the schools and the gymnasiums. And it's mostly related to insurance. So there's some activities that they can't permit within their gymnasium spaces, let's say. But we are able to rent them space within our service place facilities for those activities, but it's, it's a different cost point. So there aren't necessarily activities that we can automatically funnel into the schools if that's what you're kind of meaning. But really, it's about working with them on what they can permit based on the existence of their, of their gymnasium spaces and the spaces they can rent out for community group use and what's, what's permitted within their insurance.
All right. So just basically. All right, so just basically something like insurance. So like, I mean, if uh the new school has a rock climbing wall, we don't have a rock climbing wall facility, then we can. We, do we put the community uh group in touch with the school board, or do we facilitate that on behalf of the community?
Correct, and we, we do facilitate that booking on behalf of the community groups. So community groups book our space within our facilities. We also. Book space within the schools and we book the schools within our spaces, so we manage all of those bookings. Um, and then if anything different came out, the school divisions have been interested in having discussions with us moving forward if there's opportunities to partner. On different kinds of infrastructure, typically now it is just gymnasiums and lunchrooms are the typical spaces that are bookable within the schools.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, councillor Broadhead.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, uh through you to administration. Uh. So municipal bor- uh, boundaries aren't barriers to, to students taking uh specialized classes. Uh, is there some uh regulation or some guidance to the school boards that you're aware of that say. If sixty percent of the students uh originate in one municipality, that is where in fact the school must be? Or, or is that uh entirely up to the school board itself? We have students going into Victoria uh comp and, and Edmonton students come out to Saint Albert for, for certain uh class. Uh, so my question is, is that, is there, is there a. If sixty percent of the students come from Edmonton, the school must, must be located in Edmonton, or, or is that not even a factor?
I'm, I'm not aware of any uh guidance on that councillor Broadhead. Um, I, I think in the past when the Francophone, the last Francophone school was built, there was a, a discussion about how much of the. Student population was regional versus local and uh I, I, I never got a sense at that time that there was any sort of. Clarification from um the province as to. Uh, you know, which, which community uh supports the school. Uh, and I do know that, you know, we, the city accepts students, as you said, from Edmonton and vice versa and. I know there's prioritization and city residents, uh, but I don't know if there's any sort of um direction as to, you know. What, what community hosts the school uh based on a, based on enrollment.
Okay, fair enough. Just a question. Thank you.
It's good. Councillor Mackay, you have another question or is it? Okay. I didn't delete you. All right, uh, so I haven't, we haven't heard from councillor Bromanski, councillor Jolly or councillor Hughes. Do you have, um, do you want to jump in?
No, I mean, I, I, yeah, I've been through these conversations, so thank you for the presentation. I'm happy to, to send my, my comments to you, Tracy.
Okay, thanks. And now that you could, she and Shelly, you're good. Okay, all right, let's um look at, what motion do we want today? Just.
I think.
Okay, no later than April nineteenth, it says here. So you want it by this Friday, Tracy?
Yes, this Friday, April eighth.
Okay, all right, I'm going to pick on somebody. You've done it. Councillor Killick can do it. You've done them all. It's just the two of them in here, so I'd look at them. Just unmute if, if you guys want to make the motion, if you're at home. Go ahead councillor Killick. She did.
Thank you. Uh, that councillors provide to administration not later than April eighth, twenty twenty-two. Any suggestions they have for administration to consider during creation of the new joint use planning agreement with the school boards?
Awesome. I'll accept that. Any, any further comments?
I appreciate the presentation and uh clarification that we got on all the requirements. Um, look forward to providing the, the feedback.
All right. Seeing no one else have their hand up to go in, I just, my comments I gave you guys verbally um. And I, I hope you don't need it further than that, but um. If you do need it in writing, let, let council know, but I think today was verbal is probably sufficient. And councillor Jolly said she was going to email in some, so. All right, call for the vote. Okay.
Yeah, no, that's.
Voting's closed and that motion passes unanimously. All right, thanks guys for all the work. I know this is a. Something we thrust on you last term, but I think it'll be uh good in the end. We are now on to off-site levies, our favorite conversation. All right, we got Tanya, great.
Yep, um, so I don't have a presentation today. Um, I'm just here today to correct a clerical error that was in the last off-site levy bylaw amendment. Um, we discovered it when we were consolidating the amendment into the actual bylaw, so.
All right, did you want to, just for the public's knowledge, explain the discrepancy?
Yep, so it was just a copy and paste error. Um, so it should have read section two P was in the. Um, it should be section five. There was a change to section two P above it, but then the next one should have been section five and I just didn't change it.
Sorry, I shouldn't have made you that, but just people might be wondering what we're doing, so, okay, um councillor Mackay, go ahead.
That bylaw twenty slash twenty twenty-two be read a first time.
Anything further?
No, it was already explained.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Go ahead councillor Mackay.
That bylaw twenty slash twenty twenty-two be read uh second time.
All right, call for the vote.
I'll be unanimous consent, Mayor Herron.
Pardon?
I'll be unanimous consent.
Thanks. Uh, just waiting for this vote to get in. Okay, voting is closed and that passes unanimously. Thank you councillor Hughes, go ahead.
Going for the win here. Unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of bylaw twenty slash twenty-two.
Awesome, call for the vote. All right, voting's closed. We have unanimous consent to go to third reading councillor Mackay.
Uh, that bylaw twenty slash twenty twenty-two be read a third time and hopefully the last time.
Until next year. All right, all right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. All right, done, fixed. Okay, we have no emergent items on the agenda. We are on to council motions, which we do have one today from councillor Jolly. Thought about putting this on consent. Did we, did you guys talk about that agenda committee last week? Yeah. But honestly, I'm glad you're actually making it publicly now. It's good for um to have a conversation about the importance of this, so I'll get you to read it. And you put a bunch of whereas's, which is unusual.
Thank you to Mr. LaFleur for, for all of your whereas's. Um, bear with me while I just put up, I'm not in the right spot on the agenda.
Find it, or do you want it in the chat?
Oh, it's in the chat. I also found it. Um, so. Oh man, do we know the date that we adopted flourish? Sorry, that was missing from there.
Oh.
I'll just take it out. I'm just gonna say.
Spring of two thousand and nineteen.
I was to guess, remember? I thought it was April nineteenth.
I'll just leave the date out. It's fine. Um, whereas council um in twenty twenty-one. Uh, adopted flourish, a municipal development plan that lays out Saint Albert's goal of protecting the natural environment, conserving and enhancing its features and functions. For the well-being of our community and our planet. And whereas Riverlot fifty-six natural area contains upland. Aspen forest, stream bed communities and open meadows which provide habitat for several wildlife species and provides low-impact. Recreation and education opportunities for residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the municipal council of the city of Saint Albert. Alberta fully supports the protection of Riverlot fifty-six natural area as an environmental and recreational cornerstone of our community. And be it further resolved that the mayor be directed to prepare and send a letter to the province of Alberta to encourage the continued protection of this land from development or for any use that damages. The environment or accessibility of the area.
Awesome. All right, before I accept that, I will open it up for questions. So any questions of our administration? Councillor Killick, go ahead.
In reading the background documents, uh, it says that the Riverlot fifty-six is, six is controlled or owned by. The provincial government, so do we actually have any bearing or jurisdiction over Riverlot fifty-six?
Councillor Killick, there's uh several of us online here, um, either from environment or recreation, so. I'm just trying to decide if there's anyone on here that knows the answer offhand and wants to jump in.
Mayor, mayor may answer the question?
Oh, excellent.
Hold, hold on, not the staff, but I think, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, Ryan, I can, can respond from previous experience, if not with the city. Uh, as the, the Riverlot fifty-six, uh, sorry, through the mayor to councillor Killick, my apologies. Um, as Riverlot fifty-six is a natural area under provincial legislation, um, the city has, um, unless David wants to jump in, uh, no jurisdiction over the land use there.
And you don't have to be so formal. Don't apologize.
Further, further to that councillor Killick is that the province does have a ten-year working agreement with the Riverlot fifty-six society. To steward the lands on behalf of other provinces of Republic Hughes.
Okay, thank you. And within the provincial government, they already have pretty strict. Protection rules for Riverlot fifty-six, as I understand it. They've got quite a few. Terms and conditions within the provincial government of protecting that. I'm just trying to understand what. We would be doing over and above uh what is already either in place. Controlled by the provincial government and is it really our mandate to go in and request that they do something different or. More than what they are already doing.
Yeah, that is a good question councillor Killick, is that a few years ago, the province did look at divesting themselves of, of lands that were deemed uh naturalized or, or regional parks or parks. Um, so this is, this is, I think, another mechanism of, of just showing support for it to keep it as naturalized. Um, they have the ability to, right now, um, divestures themselves to another party. They could change the land use of that, of that site. This again is, you know, taking that position of how we would like to vision it now that it is within uh the city boundaries.
And I'll, you know, I'm sure councillor Jolly will might even address that in her comments too about the reason for the vote motion. All right, I'm seeing no more questions, so councillor Jolly, I accept your motion. I'll let you have opening comments.
Thank you. Um, so this, this motion really came um, came into existence because council was seeing a lot of concerns from residents that. Um, this area was not protected on all the planning documents um that, that have come into play since the annexation. Um, there, we also heard many, many concerns when the province was divesting of natural areas. Um, and, you know, they continue to do that exploration. So from what I understand, Riverlot fifty-six is protected, but this is really just a, a. Well, I volunteered on behalf of council, so this came of a council discussion. We were looking for a volunteer and I put my hand up saying, I'm happy to say this out loud, that this is something that is important to Saint Albert. This fits with our values. Um, I, I am confident that the province will continue to, to protect this land and, and I, I really hope that the agreement with the Riverlot fifty-six. Um, organization will continue. I think they've been incredible stewards and I hope to see them for, for a long time into the future because uh this is a really. Beautiful spot that I can now say is in Saint Albert. That's all I have, thank you.
Awesome. Councillor Hughes.
Uh, yeah, it's not a difficult decision to support this. Um, thank you councillor Jolly for bringing it forward. I think that we just need to reiterate what our intentions are for this, of this land. Um, and just make sure that the provincial government, regardless of that we don't have control over it, understands what our intentions are, how we want to have it used. So um, I really appreciate having it brought forward and just, you know, the M B P was approved April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, so I got it right. That's it.
All right, anyone else have any comments? Uh, I'll, I'll just add, I think this is going to. Councils quite often take a position or, and write a letter to the province on issues that are kind of outside their, their authority. But, but just to make sure that their intentions are, are well-known, and I think this is partly for that reason. Um, and partly for public awareness that, that. Look, whose, whose authority this land is, you know, and our values are that we love it. And that we want it to be um open for residents of entire region to explore. There's some, there's some history around the. The use of the Riverlot system in Alberta and Albert, and Saint Albert has, has a huge role historically in, in, in um. Advocating to the federal government to keep that, that system of dividing up land. So there's a historical piece to this. There's an environmental piece to this. And uh, you know, as, as we go forward and we're having further conversations um with neighbors, and I'm speaking specifically to pound maker. Uh, and, and those kind of questions, we want to make sure. They want this to stay natural, as do we. So this is a bit of a partnership motion as well, so. I do appreciate councillor Jolly for, for doing it this way. So anything to close?
Nothing further.
All right, let's call for the vote. We're just waiting for councillor Hughes. Councillor Hughes, I don't know if you didn't push send. Is it there now? Still not there.
Sorry, it somehow didn't go to everyone, so. Very few people got to know my answer was yes, but now everyone does.
All right, voting's closing that. Passes unanimously, that's what I figured. All right, we are now on to um agenda item eleven. Information requests, notice of motions and announcements. So um councillor Bromanski, there was one from you today. I'll get you to read out your I R.
Uh, which one do you want?
Did you have more than one? I was thinking the one you sent.
I did, yes.
There more than that? Generally, good track of them. Okay, just the one.
The one I sent today or the ones that we got replies on?
No, just the ones that you sent today.
Okay, we didn't finish that one uh yet. I was communicating with Carrie backward, uh, back and forth on that one, so we'll probably postpone it because the wording's not finished yet.
Okay, you, so you and Carrie are going to work on the wording together?
Yeah, thank you.
Good enough? Okay. Uh, do I, is, did anyone else have any to remind me? Okay, Cheryl's always got a handle on it, so. So no more I, I R's, no more notice of motions. Any announcements from anyone? All right, moving on. We're actually going in camera, so it's three twenty-two. So we're going to skip over twelve point one because that was time-specific, so can I have a motion to go in camera for twelve point two? Councillor Mackay, thank you.
That council move in camera to discuss a matter pursuant to section twenty-four one A of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Advice, proposals, recommendations, analysis or policy options developed by or for a public body.
Awesome, call for the vote.
Uh, Mayor Herron, just so you know, that was for the Emmett annexation, which was the time-specific one. He was supposed to read the one for uh.
Oh, did he?
Twelve point two. Yeah.
I, I did read twelve point.
Twenty-four, section twenty-four, yep.
Yeah, I read the twelve two.
It's okay, whatever.
Probably identical. All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. All right, so into council lounge we go. And I'm, is Brittany the host?
Yes, she'll be taking.
She's going to set up the breakout room?
You bet she is, yeah.
Did she get the list of? Did she get the list of?
Yeah, she has everything.
Guys are so.